All right, we can go ahead and get started. The time is now eleven thirty-two. And this is a committee of the whole meeting and we're joined by the Water Springfield Waters and Sewer Commission. This meeting was in part coordinated by Councilor Tim Allen, working with, of course, Josh across the aisle in the Water and Sewer Commission. And I know there's a presentation they would also like to provide the council this morning. We don't say that too often, but just for the record, we're joined by councilors Tim Allen, Jesse Letterman, Councillor Gomez, Councillor Davila, Councillor Brown, Councillor Hurst, Councillor Curran. And I think that's all we have currently. So without further ado, I'll kick it off to a councillor Allen, who can provide some context around how this meeting surfaced, and then go into the presentation and then take any questions from the council.
Great. Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, everybody from the Water and Sewer Commission for coming and Josh and your staff. So last year, we had, you know, a lot of discussions around the budget and the process and the rates and all that stuff. And we got through it, and it was a challenging year, as everybody knows. And I just thought I would call Josh earlier this year before it came out and see if we could get ahead of this a little bit. Meaning that we'd set up a meeting like this and for as many councils as we could and just have a good opportunity for Josh and you guys to present the Water and Sewer budget and picture and outlook and all that. And we would have a chance, instead of eighteen or thirteen concerts calling Josh randomly, that we'd have a chance to create a base of information. So Josh and I have talked several times in the last couple of months, including earlier today, make sure we're all set. So that's the idea here, that we got as many councils as we could. We put this out about three weeks ago so people could put it on their calendars. And so we'll turn it over to Josh here in a minute, and you can give the presentation, which you're hoping is around twenty, twenty-five minutes. And then we get into questions. So without further ado, that's the deal. Josh, welcome you and your staff and look forward to a good presentation.
Great, Councillor.
Josh, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself before jumping in, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, yep, that's first order of business. Thank you, President William. So again, I'm Josh Schimmel, Executive Director, Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Glad to be here, glad to be presenting what's going on over here as it relates to the budget and rate setting here at the commission. Need to thank and recognize all of my commissioners. Chairman Rodriguez, who is on the call, Commissioner Otero, who is also on the call, and Commissioner William Leonard as well. So who I believe is not on the call.
Okay.
So from our staff standpoint, I have our comptroller, Anthony Basile, that you can see, as well as our Finance Director, Dominic Pellegrino, and then some supporting staff in Communications and Outreach with Jamie Bartek and Katie Shea. And that's where we are with our staff. So, you know, with that, we have a good story to tell this year. I think we have a good story to tell every year, as you guys know. But happy to be turning the page on the pandemic and on what was a difficult year operationally and from a budget perspective over here at the Water and Sewer Commission, and looking forward to the next year. And I think we have a good story to tell. So I'm just gonna jump right in unless Chairman Rodriguez or Commissioner Otero, if you have any opening words as well, I'd be glad to offer that up.
We're just glad to be here to see people interested in what we do.
Great. Okay, so Councillor Allen, can I just have permission to share? Do I have that already? Looks like I do, so I'm gonna jump right in.
Yeah, go right ahead and do that. Great.
Okay, are you all seeing the presentation now?
Yep, I am.
All right, so I'll do the best I can here. I'm gonna try to move pretty quickly. There's a lot of the stuff that we that we generally cover, and this is, you know, more or less a version of our public hearing presentation, but we've adopted it for a shorter version and to address some of what we believe will be, you know, some of the concerns of the council. So I'm gonna also just being technically deficient, I'm gonna page along with my notes. So let me just see here if I can get this to advance. So there you go, we're rolling. Okay. So, you know, as you all know, we're an independent public regional utility established coming up on twenty-five years ago. We're governed by a three-member board appointed by the Mayor of Springfield and approved by the City Council. We operate and maintain the largest water and wastewater system in Western Massachusetts and really the second largest in the state. And again, just I know the council is concerned with Springfield, but just wanna reemphasize the fact that we are a regional water and sewer authority, and we provide wholesale and retail to a bunch of the surrounding communities in the region as well. So, you know, as you know by now, and you can see from this map, we have an expansive system. It spans some thirty miles from one end to the other. And that system itself is composed of tens of thousands of critical infrastructure assets that we own, operate, and maintain. And our stewardship of all of these assets is what ensures delivery of our services, which is turn your tap water on and get a clean glass of water and don't think twice about it and flush your toilet and it goes away, and we're doing a good job. So just, you know, we're looking at literally tens of thousands of assets, thousands of miles of piping, treatment plants, pump stations, dams, watershed. And I think we've harped on this a bunch, is a lot of this infrastructure is old. Twenty-five percent of that pipe, piping network that's over a thousand miles is more than a hundred years old. So we have two-hundred-and-fifty miles of pipe in our system that's in use today, that's more than a hundred years old, and forty percent of it is more than seventy-five years old. So a lot of aging infrastructure. We have treatment plants that are in service today that date to nineteen oh nine, nineteen thirty, and the nineteen seventies. So old infrastructure, always the challenge for us. But it's not, you know, it's not just the infrastructure we manage, which I think we try to demonstrate every year. We manage the infrastructure, we maintain it, we operate it, but we also manage a lot of other things. We manage everything that comes along with the Safe Drinking Water Act and the Clean Water Act. And that's regulatory compliance, sampling, compliance with regulations, compliance with the Army Corps of Engineers. We also manage public health and safety as it relates to water and wastewater. And there is a tremendous amount of regulation and structure around those items as well. And then again, we manage all of our physical and cyber security of over eighteen thousand acres of thousands of pieces of critical infrastructure above ground and below ground. And we manage all of that from a security standpoint, and we manage it also from a resiliency standpoint and a sustainability standpoint. So a lot of stuff going on here at the commission, a lot of responsibility. So, and folks, feel free to jump in, you know, this isn't gonna take up too much time, hopefully. So if something comes up that jumps at you, I don't mind being interrupted. So I wanna talk a little bit about our budgeting approach. It's consistent and well-established. We try to do the same approach every year. It's, you know, it's composed of four major parts. Those major parts are developing our annual spending budget, and that's from an O and M standpoint, and then from our capital investment needs, and that involves a lot of master planning-type issues as well as short-term needs. And then, you know, current and projected debt service, obviously finances is critically important. And then it's a forecast of what our revenues are. Last year, obviously, that was extremely challenging as we had a tremendous drop during the budgeting process of consumption. And we're seeing up to twenty percent drop in consumption at the time of budgeting last year. I think we're a little more stable this year. And we take those two things and we match them up, and we do a gap analysis to say, this is what we need. This is what we're projecting from revenues for water and sewer sales. We do a gap analysis, and that's how we establish the rates. We figure out a way to package projects. We look at different methods of packaging and financing and scheduling what the needs are, and then out of that comes your rate each year. Okay? A little bit, and we say this every year and we always will, again, we've said it before, virtually all of our revenue is generated by the rates that are collected associated with the sale of water and sewer services. Ninety-five percent of our revenue comes from rates. About five percent comes from fees, grants, and other sources. Obviously, we're hoping to see this change, and we think this will change in the coming year with a lot of the federal money that's gonna hit the street. But we don't receive local, state, or federal aid of any kind. We're not part of a municipal governance structure, so we don't see that type of aid come our way. And we receive very few grants. We do receive grants. We do chase grants. But in the water sector, there just are not a lot of them. Just, you know, wanna provide a graph that has come across our desk here in the past couple of months. This is really just a chart that depicts the substantial decline in federal funding over the past decades for the water sector. So if you can see my mouse, you can see, you know, peeking out in nineteen seventy-seven, which is when, you know, we were getting the money to build our two most modern treatment plants. Were built in the seventies and finished off in seventy-seven. Lo and behold, it's just been a steady decline in federal investment in the water sector. And really, I'd like to point out that, you know, out of sight, out of mind, you know, people don't go to their water plants and their wastewater plants, and they don't peel up the pavement to see what's underground. This chart would look very much the opposite if it were transportation, roadways, energy, education. Those branches of government have seen increased funding over the past thirty, forty, fifty years. But the water sector has absolutely not. So just wanna show you, like, why hasn't there been a lot of investment? Well, because it's really hard for governance structures that are independent or part of a municipal structure to invest in all of those other things and water and sewer when you're not getting any federal dollars. Do, I do wanna talk a little bit about the impacts of the pandemic as it relates to the current year and last year. You know, overall, coming out of fiscal year twenty, so when we were with you all last year, having the same type of meeting, we closed the books on fiscal year twenty with a loss of revenue of four-point-three million dollars. So from March through June last year, from a loss of, from a lack of use, a lack of consumption, we lost four-point-three million dollars. That complicated, obviously, moving into fiscal year twenty-one, which we're in now, and affected the rates that we had last year, which landed at nine-five. But this year, moving in, we've rebounded completely in our consumption. So we had a good hot summer last year. We sold a lot of water. And really, what we've seen in this slide is a shifting of, we got our consumption back, but now our receivables have really skyrocketed, and they're coming under control. But if you start seeing it in June of last year, and then in July, we start seeing gray is receivables, and the dark blue, I believe, is our three-year average. So you can see that we got to more than double our three-year average in receivables in August and really kept up at that, you know, for most of the summer and into the fall of last year. Coming into the calendar year twenty-twenty-one, you can see January and February, again, we had receivables that were, you know, were generally in that four million, and we were up about eight million. Those numbers have come down now through a variety of communications and efforts that we've undertaken, as well as I think a lot of federal money has been released to citizens and our customers to help specifically with, you know, affordability and housing and utility. So you can see, you can see these numbers are coming down as of April, but there's still millions of dollars higher than they have been in the past. And I think throughout all of this period, we had a great deal of sensitivity to our customers who were struggling to pay those bills. I'm gonna take a second. I see a hand up there. Councillor Allen, can you just, I don't have, can you?
It looks like it's Councillor Marlo Brown.
Outway, so after the front of fishing.
Okay, no worries. So, you know, we rolled right into, really early on, out of almost any of the utilities, water sector utilities across the state, we were the first ones to delay or suspend our shut-off program. And we came out really quickly with a lot of things and adjusted on the fly early in the pandemic, and then more substantially and more meaningfully as the pandemic wore on. So we've always been pretty good about having generous terms, but we've established probably more generous payment plans than traditionally. And then we've allowed for equal installments so people can make a regular payment so that during the summer, they don't have larger payments if they're watering their lawns or consuming more. You know, generally speaking, in an average year, we would see two to three hundred payment plans continuously on the books. During the course of the pandemic, we're over seven hundred plans that are active. So you can see that the ability to do the payment plans has really helped out those that needed. And I think most importantly is our staff have done a great job communicating the and making sure folks who need it have access to this, and that's the most important thing, I think. From that standpoint, I think a lot of programs designed to help folks who need it are underutilized, and we're very much aware of that. So we've been continually trying to promote what we can do to help our customers who are most in need. We also developed and adopted a customer assistance program that provided some relief through a credit. And the board was very supportive of this, and we have over seven hundred folks who are utilizing that now. So that's a program that never existed before, and we stood it up last November and made sure that folks knew about it. We've advertised it, we've promoted it, it's on our website, it's on our social media. And that program was structured very much like the Low Income Housing and Energy Assistance Program, the LIHEP programs that folks are familiar with in the social services for families that have heating assistance issues. And so we really based it on a very similar format as that, and it's a hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar credit. We upped our senior and disabled veterans discount, I think, to seventy-five dollars. I think it was thirty-some dollars a year, so we almost tripled that discount. And then, as we always have done, we provide a free in-home leak survey to folks who have a high bill and didn't realize they had a leak. So we'll come in, we'll find the leak and identify it, and then they can fix it, and we allow a one-time leak abatement for eligible customers. So I think we have, you know, in comparison to many, many other municipal water departments or wastewater departments or other utilities, we have a pretty generous and pretty broad customer assistance program in its entirety and are always plugged into, you know, how do we get people to utilize it? And we don't want it to be underutilized. It's there for the folks that need it. So that's a really important piece for us and has been right from the onset of the pandemic. Additionally, you know, some of you have heard this, of course, we've been briefing our commissioners. There is one-point-one billion dollars worth of assistance now available for, and it's Low Income Water Assistance Program through the federal government. It was originally put in in the Consolidated Appropriations Act, and then another five hundred million in the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. Myself individually was right there and part of a small group of utility leaders that got the first six-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars. I did that through a role as being on the Board of Directors of some national associations. So we were instrumental in getting that six-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars for low-income water assistance into the Consolidated Appropriations Act, and it got a lot of traction, and they added another five hundred million. So we, before this even came out to the states, we were already in touch with the folks in the Secretary Canely from Housing and Economic Development. This money is going to actually come through LIHEP program infrastructure that already exists. So we're the only utility in the state that has a customer assistance program for water and wastewater that is based on a LIHEP architecture. So when this one-point-one billion dollars comes to Massachusetts, it's gonna be administered through the LIHEP program that's already in place and will already be ahead of everybody because we will be the only utility that already has a program based on LIHEP architecture. And we've met with Secretary Canely, who's responsible for it, and his staff three times now to make sure that they understand that, you know, low-income housing or heating and energy assistance is different than water. Heating and energy utilities operate different than water utilities. So we've had multiple very productive meetings on how this money will be distributed and are continuing that dialogue. So we're plugged into that, we're on top of it, and feel like we're in a really, really unique and good place as it relates to a LIHEP-type program. You know, really, but what does this all mean? It all brings us back to the most pressing need, which for us is the unprecedented need for investment and modernization of our systems. And it's not unique to Springfield. We've said that. As you saw in the graphics before, federal investment in the water sector has completely declined. All of us have kinda individually been left on our own to kinda figure out a way to invest, not go bankrupt, and not negatively affect other departments, systems, whatever it may be. And so, you know, I think with so much of our core infrastructure being fifty years or older, we've struggled, and we currently do struggle, to keep up with today's regulatory and technology demands. Our infrastructure is old. We're using a fifty-year-old water treatment plant to meet regulations that were passed in twenty-sixteen. So it's really difficult, and that's why you get notices in your bills and in your mail on occasion of our non-compliance. And I think what we have done is come up with master planning over the past couple of years to put us in a position to know what we need to do moving into the future, and that's what our budgeting process is about. It's about stability, it's about affordability, and it's about our ability to continue to provide services each and every year. So good news out of all of this is we've landed a once-in-a-generation-type loan program from the federal government and in which we were competing against many, many other applicants. You know, and we got the only, we got the only type of award in New England in this last round, the only one ever in Massachusetts, where the fifth-largest amount administered in the country. And we took a really innovative approach to how we applied for this loan and how we packaged our application. And I think we beat the odds because we were competing against major metropolitan areas. We were competing against San Francisco, Portland, Oregon, Chicago, Los Angeles, and Springfield landed this program. And I think staff worked really hard here and identified this program before we even passed the budget last year, before we publicly announced what the rate increases were last year. When the pandemic hit, we were tracking this, and we tracked it, and we leveraged every relationship, every opportunity we could to put ourselves in a position to compete for this grant. And lo and behold, I think we beat the odds, and we got a half-a-billion-dollar program sitting in our lap. And really, truly, I don't know how we could get out of the hole we are in in terms of infrastructure needs without this type of money. So what you're really looking at overall is close to five-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, so half-a-billion dollars of investment over the next five years. And what that really does for us is a couple of things. But let me talk a little bit about the grant itself. So it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-one million dollar, or rather, the loan. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-one million dollar from the federal government from EPA. There's a two-hundred-and-fifty million dollar match for that. Our intention is to utilize the state revolving fund, the SRF program, to really tie our match to for the federal government. So it's two, it's two low-interest loans. And the SRF program is something we've utilized a lot in the past fifteen or twenty years. Really, since we've initiated any capital work as a utility, the SRF program is how we do it for larger projects. So it's a strategic, it's a strategic placement of binding the SRF program with this WIFIA program, and they'll be administered through the state and through the federal government. And additionally, outside of this, we've, obviously, you guys have seen in the newspaper of recent, we also have another forty-seven million dollars from the SRF program that was just announced a few weeks ago. We have a hundred-and-thirty million dollar SRF program ongoing for Cornerstone Wastewater Project. So the takeaway is we competed for a program and we landed it. And I think also the flexibility within both of these programs means if grant, if grant money's become available as part of future infrastructure or recovery bills, we'll have the flexibility to take advantage of those. And I think that was key to us as well because we do think we're gonna see quite a bit of infrastructure money specifically for the water sector hitting the streets here in the coming months. You know, and I think when we talk about the WIFIA program, there's a ton of savings with how we strung these two programs together, and I'm just gonna call it the WIFIA program, but it's really the WIFIA program and the SRF program combined for us. And obviously, there's some revenue spending in there as well. But from the SRF side, we're gonna save over twenty million dollars by utilization of the SRF program compared to bonding on the open market. So it'll be a twenty million dollar saving over twenty years on the SRF and over sixty million dollars over twenty to thirty years on the WIFIA program just based on the innovative financing terms that they let you have. So that alone is gonna reduce pressure on rates tremendously. I think, you know, the other things that I think are even or equally as important as the financial savings are, we're accelerating projects. We're doing essentially a twenty, twenty-five-year capital program in five years. And what does that mean for all of our customers? Well, at the end of the day, it means regulatory compliance, which Well, a- at the end of the day, it means regulatory compliance, which which sometimes it means a lot to us, but sometimes that's not what our customers care about. But it means better reliability and resiliency, and it reduces our risks. And we have a lot of risk because the age of our infrastructure for failure. Um, and so the 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 acceleration of these programs into a shorter window really helps us bite off a big chunk of what we have to do. That if we did it over twenty years, not only would it cost more to to get it done as things in, as inflation takes its toll, but we would be at a higher risk. And obviously, doing things in an emergency function costs more than planning it out and and doing it. Uh, and and so we have a really nice aggressive plan uh to take a big bite out of our infrastructure needs here in the next five years and do it in a extremely affordable way. And then again, the WIFIA program itself uh provides flexible terms for us uh that make it uh make it a value. If it wasn't a value, we wouldn't be looking at it um and uh it retains our ability to respond to future conditions. So if grants fall in our lap, um, we're going to jump on them. And and what I will say is by having so much infrastructure um projects and and the program itself for us is thirty-one major projects. Um, by having those all on the books and and kind of quote unquote registered with the SRF and with WIFIA, when federal shovel ready or project ready monies become available, we will be ready for whatever, whatever we can land, we will because we will have uh basically a shelf full of ongoing projects that will be in some um in in some form of design construction. And so we'll be really well positioned uh in that, in that way. Those projects and I I, you know, I know I'm taking a lot of time here, counselors, but I think this is important stuff. What do those projects mean to you? Well, the, you know, those projects are the the notices you get for H A A five uh violations that we've seen a lot of in the past two years. Well, that's going to direct directly address that um with upgrades at the West Parish Filter Treatment Plant for uh at the water plant. Um, and and a whole slew of specific upgrades for that. Um, it's going to be redundancy to make sure that, you know, we don't have a single point of failure in our system to get water to the treatment plant or to get water from the treatment plant uh to the communities that we serve. Uh, and that's raw water conveyance at the wastewater plant. It it's biological nutrient removal upgrade. That's just an upgrade to a fifty year old plant to meet um, to meet permit and to have modernization. Um, and these are all big ticket uh items, you know, a hundred and sixty-seven million, five million, twenty-five million. Uh, another close to forty million dollars uh in Springfield uh on the on on the streets uh for our water and sewer. And that's specifically for Springfield and Ludlow, another forty million dollars plus or minus. And and that usually comes along with paving and and sidewalks and curbing. So um, we're, we're spreading out this program uh over a a broad uh, a broad brush of all of our infrastructure and really making headway on um making headway on 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 critical needs uh and reducing risk. Uh, I do, you know, why is this a good deal? Well, so, you know, last year we came out uh of um a sixteen point nine initially proposed rate increase. We got it down to a nine five because uh our conditions changed and our consumption uh rebounded from March and April to May and June. Um, and so, you know, we were able to get it down to a nine five, but we knew coming out of that that we would be at a nine five this year. Uh, that nine five that we came out of last year did not present um what we're doing for infrastructure today. That nine five was for infrastructure projects, but not at the, at the pace and rate that we have proposed with the WIFIA deal. So it's not an apples to apples comparison, but what you see here is um if we took on the same WIFIA program with and without uh the WIFIA and we used our our standard financing terms, you can see what the difference is. And that's that, you know, eighty million dollars in savings that you see over twenty years, which is substantial. Um, but there's other metrics as well that are important to us. Um, you know, the portion of debt service in our operating budget, really, we we try to keep that under thirty percent. We also had have debt service coverage ratios and and these are more financial um metrics that we have to keep track of or obey with based on our policies. Um, but the WIFIA loan provides us a really fiscal stability, fiscal health, and uh really balanced rate increases to do significant and meaningful um investment in our infrastructure. Um, and as you can see, just the bottom line here is from what we came out of last year or or rather compared to with and without WIFIA, you can see we're three point six, two point seven five, three percent, three and a half, four, four or five. We're lower than we would be in any other uh financial scenario. So um.
Yeah, Josh?
Yeah.
Yeah, could I just, uh, it's a good juncture. Uh, I just want to ask a question somewhat related to this.
So sure.
So so this sounds great that the WIFIA loan, that you pursued it, that you got it. And obviously, it's having a lot, providing a lot of relief here um in these projections. Um, last year, one of the things I felt was we saw this infrastructure that had to be done. And um, it was just a mind boggling amount of money. And I personally, speaking for myself, wasn't sure where the money was coming from. And, you know, it's concerned that it would, it would balloon rates and all that sort of thing. But it seemed like there needed to be, you know, a bunch of money to sh- to show up on your doorstep. And it it now seeing the WIFIA loan and stuff, it seems like that's what's happened, that you've got the capital infusion to start to plan out this infrastructure. And instead of like wondering how are we going to get through it? That was, I I mean, this is an endorsement for me, for the loan, for going and getting the loan. And and uh, am I, am I seeing it the right way that the infrastructure that last year seemed overwhelming? And still, it's just as big as it was, but now there seems to be the ability to do a, to plan for it.
Yeah, I mean, I I that that that, that's a great observation. And what I can say is we've known what the needs are. We just can't afford to do it. And and so we do it piecemeal. And when you do it piecemeal, like I kind of just said, you're at risk because you have critical infrastructure that's aging out and will fail. And so by chasing this this loan, you're absolutely right. What it does is it allows us to reach out and grab the stuff that we've identified as the highest risk or most beneficial in a number of different metrics. It allows us to reach out and just swallow that up and get it done in a five-year plan. Are we done after five years? Absolutely not, not even close. But what it does is it puts us in a position of stability for um for infrastructure investment. So that if we continue on at the pace that we've been going, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty million dollars a year, um, we'll be making meaningful bites out of what's left. Uh, this falling in our lap, and it didn't fall in our lap. We we chased it down and tore it out of other people's hands. But uh, getting this program in place, uh, as I said, it's a once in a generation opportunity. This, this is, um, this will change our organization. We would have struck, we would, and I I don't doubt that we will continue to struggle in many ways. Um, but we would have really struggled to be in regulatory compliance and be able to consistently supply water and wastewater services to our communities over the next twenty years without this. I mean, we would do it. We would do the best we can with what we have as we do every year. But this allows us to uh really make meaningful gains in what is a struggle for every water and wastewater system across the country. And so again, hundreds of people compete for these things uh and a handful of them get them. And and we landed the fifth largest one in the country. So yes.
That's great. That's great. Anybody else got any questions at this juncture?
Yeah, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I I want to thank you for the work that you're doing, Josh. Um, I was just uh basically curious as far as the recycled water that we're using. Is that something that is coming back through the faucet? What what are we coming, what's coming through our faucet?
That's, that's uh, that's pure Cobble Mountain clean water. So we don't, we don't have a gray water or a recycled water system. Uh, our water system comes from the Cobble Mountain Reservoir where we have a a protected watershed of eighteen thousand acres. It comes to the treatment plant. We treat it. It goes through our storage system and then out to be distributed to our wholesale and retail uh customers. Uh, and then, and then you use that water out of your tap. It it's as pure as it could possibly be. And then um, when you flush it, when it goes down the drain and you flush it, it comes back to us in a separate piping network. And we treat that as wastewater and we clean it and then we discharge it clean to the environment uh over here at Bondi's Island where where our offices are.
Okay, uh, uh, because I just heard, you know, people always have a certain uh myth about that stuff. So I, I just wanted to make sure. And then um, as far as the beneficial qualities um that you get from the water, um, when you, when you, you know, when you actually, your body's supposed to have certain things that you do need. And I know when you treat the water that some of those things can be harmed. Um. Are there different chemicals and things in the water that we're using? Do you know about that? And um, do we know the negative effects?
Yeah, I mean, the uh, outside of pharmaceuticals, there aren't too many sectors that are more highly regulated than drinking water. And so um, we're highly regulated. So yeah, by all means, uh, we know exactly what's in that water. We follow every state, federal and local um regulatory uh requirement. And annually, we come out with a report that tells you exactly what's in the water. I believe that was actually, um, I believe that just got published uh recently, but uh we can check on that. So you get an annual water quality report that tells you exactly what's in the water, where we were or we're not in compliance, um, which has been a struggle in in some areas. And then I I think also, um, you know, we're, we're, we're not out there just kind of doing this on our own. We're part of many organizations and plugged in with other utilities. And so whatever treatment processes that we utilize or chemicals that we u- utilize, i- it's not as if we're the first ones doing it or the only ones doing it. We're using tried and true technology, chemicals, processes.
Well, what, 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 uh, not to cut you off, Josh, just because I do, I I study that stuff. So I, when it comes to that, uh, um, the actual drinking water. So I I I I know that there has been certain uh standards of how day-to-day different areas treat their water. But I do also know that the chemicals that we're using, um, sometimes they find that they weren't as great to you, wasn't a great idea. Um, the water quality in the past, when I was growing up, it Springfield was absolutely flawless almost. Unless I'm, I I don't remember, but I do remember a little that faucet. And if you couldn't tell the difference between a bottled water or our water, I think our water was better. I noticed a change now than it was before. Does that have to do with the infrastructure also or is it impulse? Like, because there is a a drastic change as far as quality level. It used to be better when I was in my youth. I mean, it was, it seemed a little different.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's a, that's a good observation and I I can't argue that observation. I think what has happened over time is there's a couple of things. One, regulations have changed, which means we have to change treatment processes. And treatment processes may change uh how water tastes. Not necessarily the quality of the water, because the water has to meet certain quality standards always. Although those water quality standards change. And then I think the other issue is that um, the source water has changed too. I mean, we're seeing impacts of changes in climate on our source water. So we're not treating the same water we treated ten, fifteen or twenty years ago. It's a different water body. And and the water body has aged and it's been impacted by some of the uh environmental changes that have taken place. And I don't think we're alone in that. I think many water systems are experiencing exactly that. Like uh, climate change is impacting our our source water. Um, and so, you know, what I can tell you is that um, I always, you know, my preference is tap water. Um, a- and I I'm, I believe in tap water. I believe in public water suppliers. I believe in their commitment to providing safe and clean water. Um, and and that's, that's just, you know, that's part of my fabric. Um, but I I think you're getting safe water and I think at the end of the day, it's meeting all the regulations. And if it's not meeting the regulations, you're told that it's not and what the risk i- is for that. Um, and I think the programs that we're putting uh as part of this WIFIA program are only going to improve upon what we already have. Um, so, you know, I I can't speak to what it was. I can speak to what it is. And and what it is, is um, just me, i- i- it's meeting the challenges of a changing environment and changing regulations and still putting out a a product that meets all of those.
Thank you, Josh. I appreciate it.
Sure. No, good, good questions, good observations. Um, and Counselor.
Josh, were you completed with your presentation? I know Counselor Letterman also has a question.
Yeah, I mean, listen, if you don't want to go through the the pie charts of the financial stuff, uh, I'm okay with that. I was going to hand it off to Tony for that. So if you guys are less interested in um, if you're, if you're less interested in in some of the financial stuff and you just want to get into questions, you let me know. I still have, there's probably still about ten more slides to go.
Okay, well, I'll I'll pass it to Counselor Letterman and then perhaps we can continue.
Mr. President, I definitely want to get into the pie charts of the financial. That was, I was going to ask if this was the end of the presentation before. So I'll hold my questions, Mr. President.
I would thank you, Josh.
That, thanks a lot, Counselor. You could have given me my out.
Sorry.
All right, so uh, you guys can all still see uh my screen, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so let's, let's just advance here. Um, you know, this, this kind of brings us back to um our process, right? And and so our process is really important to us. Um, and financial planning is the key to everything. And so, um, you know, sound financial policies and practices provide us uh the opportunity to have budget discipline, controlled flexibility for the unexpected, strong financial ratings, which mean a lot um, in order to be eligible or get better loan uh terms. Uh, and and that's in reduced borrowing costs and uh competitiveness for limited resources. Um, proactive project planning, what we said, we, we know what we need to do. It's just we haven't been able to afford it and now it looks like we're landing something that will allow us. Um, it maximizes how we invest our dollars and that is a reflection on our rate payers. So it just makes it more affordable. We're very strategic in in what we do. So our capital program, we don't do a project that checks a single box. We do projects that check multiple boxes. So they check renewal, they or or infrastructure investment, they check redundancy, they checked resiliency. So uh, we're, we're pretty strategic in projects that we develop and choose. Um, and the unpress, you know, anticipating um unprecedented investment uh is needed because we have aging and failing infrastructure. Uh, we have new regulations, unfunded mandates that, uh, you know, regulations that cost us money to meet that we don't um get money for. Uh, and we're, we're dealing with twenty-first cha- twenty-first century challenges, climate change, cybersecurity. And we have infrastructure from the nineteenth century. So uh, you know, i- it's, it's quite a challenge. But i- in in all, um, what I can say is when we competed with many other more what I would consider to be more sophisticated utilities and municipalities and municipalities and utilities that have far more resources than we have. You know, one of the reasons we got um the WIFIA loan uh, wasn't just that we kind of put a unique approach to it and an approach that they had never seen before, but it was our financial position. You know, i- it was, it was being creditworthy. It was be having sound financial policies in place and abiding by that. It was being well organized and be able to lay out um capital planning that showed vision to the future. Um, it was having confidence, ha- having the WIFIA program, folks having confidence in the fact that we could complete the work. Um, thirty-one projects, five years, half a billion dollars. Um, we had to demonstrate that we could get the work done. Um, and that we could show a compliance, a a a pathway to regulatory compliance. So that's why we got the WIFIA loan. I- it's all of those things uh that really are at the core of our utility and and the position that we're in. Um, and so that's kind of um a planning aspect. And so that's kind of, um, a planning aspect of what we do. I'm going to hand it off and, and, uh, grab a sip of coffee here, uh, to Tony Basile, our comptroller. And, and he's gonna, um, talk to you a little bit about the components, uh, of the, uh, of the budget each year and what they are. And Tony, you just, uh, clue me in when you want me to, um, advance the slides, okay?
Okay.
Josh, if I could say something, that's great. Uh, looking forward to Tony's, uh, presentation. But if we could, we're at the 45, 50 minute mark. So if we could just cover the slides, but cover them quickly.
Sure. Uh, good afternoon, uh, councillors. These upcoming slides are intended to present an overview of the commission's sources and uses. The Springfield Water and Sewer Commission's organization and its finances are self-supporting. Uh, the revenues that are generated by the rates for providing water and sewer services are the primary source of revenue that is used to operate and maintain the system. And provide for capital improvements. You can see by this, uh, pie chart. That the revenue from the retail water and sewer portion of all the revenues are generated from the rates, right? The combined retail water and sewer on the bottom part of the pie chart represents 79% of the overall revenue that we generate. Next year, we're, we're anticipating is that we were going to estimate and need $96.1 million in total revenue to support our system. So in addition, excuse me, go ahead, go ahead.
You mind turning on your video? Yeah, great.
All right. So as I said, the, uh, the pie chart reflects that, uh, majority of the revenue that we need to generate is all derived from retail water and sewer customers. So 79%, as you can see by the bottom part of that pie chart, uh, generates the overall revenue. Um, and, and this is the revenue that's derived from the residential, commercial, industrial municipal, uh, customers in the city of Springfield and Lubbock. 16% of the revenue is generated from the regional water and sewer customers. Uh, that's on a contract basis. We provide both water and sewer services to the communities of Agwam, Long Metal, East Long Metal and Southlick. In, uh, additionally, under contract, the commission provides sewer services for the communities of Lubbock, West Springfield and Wilberham, uh, plus Lucia. Two percent of the commission's revenue is anticipated from power generation. The commission owns and operates a hydro, uh, power plant in the town of Ramville. That facilitates, uh, power sales into the ISO, uh, New England market. Uh, and lastly, uh, well, part of our revenue sources, uh, come from miscellaneous sources such as income, you know, interest income. And other miscellaneous sources such as sale of scrap and, um, maybe insurance proceeds or anything else that, that comes in. So as you saw on a previous chart, uh, 95% of our revenues, uh, really is generated from our, from our customers. Josh, can you go to the next slide? So, uh, this shows a breakdown of our expenditures by category of the, the revenues that we generated that was shown on the last slide. So this is showing where it's going to be spent, $96.1 million. Uh, the annual revenues, uh, that you saw on the last slide needs to support our O and M budget. Plus the debt services as well as capital spending directly from revenue, plus any additional reserve requirements. Uh, you can see by this pie chart, uh, payroll and fringe combined, uh, combined for 28% of, of the budget spending. There are 252 funded positions throughout the commission. Employees are spaced throughout, uh, six locations of the organization, uh, that carry out the necessary functions to provide water and sewer services. Purchase of services accounts for 28% of our spending. Uh, and includes, this is where the spending, uh, or contract for the, the operation of the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, a new 20-year contract to operate, they operate the plant started in October of 2020. In addition to purchase of services, 22% of our overall annual spending is on debt service. This is to pay our, uh, scheduled principal and interest payments and outstanding loans and, uh, bond issues. In addition, uh, 4% of the budget is dedicated for supplies and materials, which includes the cost of chemicals. Uh, necessary to treat, uh, water from Cobble Mountain, uh, down to our customers. And the, um, and Josh spoke about the, uh, in addition to financing in, uh, our capital projects, uh, we spend money directly out of revenue. So next year we budgeted $11.7 million, uh, for, uh, projects that are going to be spent directly out of revenue. And that represents 12% of our budget. These kind of costs include some things such as, uh, meters, hydrant replacements, main replacements, repair maintenance, all the commission's resource, uh, if, infrastructure. We are also required to add $4 million, uh, to our covenant reserves. This is a formula-based calculation that's in accordance to the commission's, uh, bond resolution. And lastly, there's a category there called other, uh, $1.9 million. And that includes, uh, uh, things like property tax payments to towns where we own land. Property liability insurance and capital outlay equipment, uh, for, for, for small purchases, uh, equipment purchases.
Tony, I think, um, that's great information. And if you could send us the, the presentation, that would be great. But in terms of needing to go through that level of detail in this, I, I think you could stay a level higher than that.
Higher than this?
Yeah, I, I mean, you don't need to go through each thing. We're going to lose people. We're at about an hour. So I would say get the, uh.
Okay, Josh, just put the, the, uh, slides for not, that, that one right there, if I could just give you a summary. Uh, basically our, our budget is increasing $2.4 million from our existing, uh, budget. And really the driver is debt service. Uh, we've been on firmly financing a $60 million, uh, loan this year. And it's a combination of, of debt service and, uh, loan charges that make up the 2.1 million. Uh, our operation, even though, uh, many line items are going to vary, uh, as we went through the budget process. But really, if you look at total operations, that, those combined line items for the operation only increased a half of a percent. Or $335,000. So that, that's totally to make up of our O and M budget and, and debt service. Obviously we have a lot more spending, uh, in, in the way of capital and, uh, and financing. I, I won't go through it. I'll then hear if that's what you want and I'll open it up to questions, uh, for myself or Josh.
Yeah, it's great. It's great info. I'm just afraid that we might lose some people and I've got a couple of questions, but I can defer to whoever else has questions. Anybody out there?
Councillor Allen, we have till one o'clock.
I, I know, I know, but that doesn't mean everybody will stay till one o'clock. And I, I'm, the, the information is great. I just want to make sure that, um. Can you email us this presentation? Is that?
I think so.
Councillor Allen, am I able to speak? Can you hear us?
Tom, sorry, before you start, I gotta say you're wearing the red, uh, school on your shirt.
Your, your eyes are good. I did not go there. I just paid for my daughter to go there. Go Eagles. So Josh and, uh, um, Mr. Brazil, um, the rate increase of 5.9% um, looks very reasonable. The borrowing for long-lived assets is appropriate and should be familiar to all of us from last year's discussion. I think, uh, in essence, as Josh, you said, you pulled forward capex for the next few years. Get it done now. You commend you on the, uh, cheap funding, but you also, uh, it would appear things that you may have, uh. Paid for with current revenues going forward, you've now bonded for, which I think is very appropriate. And you've smoothed the rates, um, over the next few years, rather than the 9% that you thought. It's down in the six, uh, and 5% range. So I think, um, to me. This makes a lot of sense and it, uh, should sound familiar to us from our discussion last year. Just a couple of questions on grants. Um, and, um, as you said, you're going to be, uh, actively pursuing them. The CARES Act, um, I believe the city of Springfield got quite a bit of money. I know the Springfield redevelopment authority has asked for and received some of that money. Have you asked for any of the money from the city? And can you get any of that money for the water department?
Yeah, no, we really haven't asked for that money. I think the, the city itself has, uh, quite a few challenges as a result of the pandemic. I think where we see eligibility, um, a- a- as specifically for independent utilities. Uh, is under the non-entitlement units where there's $19.5 billion nationally, under the state and local fiscal recovery fund. So that's where we can apply directly, um, for funding, uh, we're considered a non-entitlement unit. And the, the, uh, the protocols for that have not been released yet. So, and, and nor has it been released to the state. So, uh, it's, it's supposed to be forthcoming. They said this week. I have not seen it yet. So in the next couple of weeks here, the feds are going to release to the states specifically the guidance for non-entitlement units. Which is all those other non-municipal or, or county-based units. And then, and then we would look at that and we would start having conversations with the governor's office about how to apply directly, uh, for funding for us. And, and that's, that's kind of where that plays out from our perspective. I think you, you also, uh, Mr. Shet, you have to remember, right? So Springfield got money, but we're a regional authority and, and to take money from Springfield. And then utilize it for Springfield-specific, um, work is really difficult for us. Because we are spread across such a large area and not everything is Springfield-centric. So for, from our perspective, um, we believe we're going to be able to land some grant funding. We're going to be able, uh, to get some of this non-entitlement, um, unit money as well. We feel like we're pretty well situated. I don't want to take money out of other social service needs of the city itself and spread them across other areas. So I, I, in, in our mind strategically, I think we're well positioned. We couldn't be more well positioned to get grants and other federal funding.
Josh, I guess what I would say is, to my understanding, you know, the money that's given to Springfield is based upon, um, you know, federal criteria. Not all state or municipalities have separate water and sewer commissions. So, um, in essence, Springfield's getting money like Pittsburgh might. And I would encourage you, you're, you're not taking money from, you know, that's not necessarily belonging to you. I would, I would encourage you to ask for that money. The Springfield redevelopment authority has asked for it. They're not bashful. But that's up to you. Um, but the money is there. And then under the American Resource Act, it sounds like you're ready to go there. So that's good. One other question on grants, MassWorks. It would appear that some other communities, Wellfleet, et cetera, have gotten fairly large million dollar, uh, you know, up to three and a half million dollar grants. Projects such as, I guess, Locust Street this year, $24 million. Did you apply for any grants for that or would it have been eligible for grants?
The grant eligibility, because we fought, because the size of that project, we fund it through the SRF. And when we fund it through the SRF, we get grants in the form of debt forgiveness. And from the SRF program, they figure that at the end of the year, depending on what the balance is on the books. And then it gets distributed and because, uh, because, and, and that gets factored in because we're a regional authority. But the bulk of our customers are in Springfield and it's an environmental justice community. Uh, we still get the highest ranking in terms of debt forgiveness, which is a grant. So that's our funding source. I think a lot of the MassWorks grants, although if you read the statute, were eligible as an independent utility. But my experience with MassWorks is they're you, they're, they're, uh, very much community-based projects. Where there's streetscapes, where there's improvements to areas where, uh, there's pedestrian traffic and, and all. A, 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 a little different than just the straight up gray infrastructure, underground, dig the street up, put in the pipe. That's not a MassWorks grant from my experience. I've seen a lot of them. We, we do work within the MassWorks program a lot. Like, we, you know, there's overlap. So we'll be, we'll be, um, at times when we've had overlap. I think we've gotten some, um, infrastructure renewal as part of one. Um, I think there's one going on in Ludlow right now where we're getting some pipe out of it and we're not paying for it and it'll benefit the, the town itself. It's not something that we have chased per se. Um, I think we're focused in on bigger, bigger bites. Um, not to say that we, we can't pursue those.
Yeah. I guess the, uh, the email I sent you, there were five, um, cities or towns listed, Wellfleet, et cetera. Those were all specific water and sewer, not roadways, not like Pinchon Park in Springfield. So, um, I guess I would just encourage you to not dismiss MassWorks. Those are grants. You know, debt forgiveness is good, but you're still paying during the period of debt. But, uh, I appreciate it. Um, you know, like I said, uh, the federal money looks very good. And you've done a nice job of smoothing out the rev- the, uh, rev- the rate increases. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I, I agree. If I could just, uh, ask, um, so relative to this big American recovery plan, bunches of money, et cetera. I talked to TJ Plant, I've talked to him a few times about it, including last night. And the guidelines, it, with, you were to go, you know, there was some money there for you and one of these outlays of money. Uh, he said he's still frustrated that it's not clear. The guidelines from the state are not, or from the feds are not clear on it. So, but what I had heard, uh, Josh, was that this first outlay of money, which I think for the, for Springfield, we've heard the number 127 million. That, that you wouldn't, I've heard conflicting things about whether water, uh, and sewer revenue could be in there somewhere. But then you said there was a second, um, grant dispersal that's going to take place where you would be eligible. Could you just, um, review that for us?
Yeah, well, the, the American Rescue Plan, um, has over $350 billion for state, local, territorial. And, and tribal governments and, and embedded within the American Rescue Plan. Is 19.5 billion for non-entitlement units. And, and non-entitlement units are really, they're municipalities that are less than 50,000. And any other non-governmental, um, entities that aren't a municipal or county government. So we would fall into that non-entitlement. And so it, it's just, we will chase that when it becomes available. It's just not available yet. And, and I, I imagine, um, and, and what I could tell, um, the council is this. Is that we're plugged into this and, and are we perfect? We are not. But, um, you know, we're, we're, I'm on the board of directors of several organizations that, uh, track these monies regularly. And so, uh, when, when they get released and they're specific to non-entitlement groups or municipal functions. Uh, I get emails from folks, uh, across the country about, hey, here, you know, keep your eye. This came out today. Make sure you look at section, da, 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 da. So I think the relationships we have with other people like us across the country, within the region, uh, within the state, uh, are really important. And we're all looking out for each other in the water sector. So I feel really comfortable that, um, there's not much that's going to get by us in terms of opportunity. And, and again, I'll, I'll say, I don't think anybody is better positioned than we are because we've been organized, because we, we did the heavy lift. To get the WIFIA program, uh, on our books. And, and just to give you an example, you know, our initial WIFIA application was over 5,000 pages. So the application itself to lay out our master planning and all the projects and all the reports, all the financial modeling, everything is over 5,000 pages. So, um, I think we're really well positioned. Any, you know, obviously people bring up, uh, this grant or that grant. We'll, we'll chase it. We'll look at it and we'll see if it's, if, if there's value in chasing it by all means. So, uh, we, we take no offense to any of that. Um, but we're well positioned.
Yeah, that's great. No, it seems that way. That's great. Jesse, did you, we kind of went fast over the financial stuff that you were interested in. Did you have any questions that you wanted to ask?
Uh, sure. Mr. President? All right. Yeah, so, um, well, I, I was similarly interested in the leveraging of the, the various federal resources. I think, you know, one of the things that became really clear during our last round of this last year was that, you know, federal investment in, in water infrastructure has been non-existent. Since the infrastructure was built. During our last round of this last year was that, you know, federal investment in in water infrastructure has been nonexistent since the infrastructure was built. Um, and so I think that, you know, what we're seeing now is probably the most substantial federal investment since that time. Um, coming in the form of uh the different acts that we've talked about here today. Um, you know, I expect that, you know, we we'll see a vote hopefully on the infrastructure, uh infrastructure building being worked on, you know, over the summer, maybe. Um, there's some talk of maybe a vote uh in June on that. Josh, do you anticipate uh there being significant funds for water infrastructure in that? Because I do. Um, and so I'm hoping that that with everything that you're plugged into, um, that that would be a significant piece.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the the dollars have actually already been identified. I just don't, I don't have them in front of me. Yeah, i- it's huge money and it hearkens back to the seventies when there was a federal grants program. And and so I I can't tell you that it's all gonna go to the right places because I think they've earmarked. Some of it that we won't be eligible because it's earmarked for lead services. And we've already done that. We've taken care of our lead service problem uh a decade ago. So again, well situated ahead of the curve. Um, so there's gonna be segments of all that money that are specific to PFAS or lead services that we're really, since we're not in that group. Um, usually by design, we're not in that group because we're ha- head of the curve. We won't be eligible for that money. But there's gonna be plenty of. Funding around. And I think when you're already in the queue with EPA for federal funding and they know who you are. Um, you're you're just gonna be in a better position. Like we, I I have calls two, three times a week. With EPA uh headquarters that runs the WIFIA program and and, you know, they know us. They 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 know us by first name. They know our financial group. Um, and so I I I'm pretty comfortable that when that. Because of our position and because of our relationships on national and regional boards, uh that when that money comes available. Um, we'll we'll be in a good place to to chase it and get land some of it um and the stuff that we're eligible. Uh, for and, you know, my my hope is, is that, you know, one of our fifty million dollar projects that we're gonna finance is gonna come off the books. That's my hope.
Yeah, and and it's been helpful that we've been able to learn more about this too, because I mean, it's 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 put us in a position to to speak out as well. And I know Senator Gomez and I uh, you know, both happen to join uh independent of one another. Um, you know, a national organization of of local elected officials that lobby on on water quality and water infrastructure now and I've been involved in some of their efforts. Um, so I, you know, I think everybody's just gotta work together to bring that in. Uh, the the other question I had before we uh move on is. Uh, relative to the HAA five levels and how this budget uh factors into the changes that need to be made. Um, at the water treatment facility uh and and how we think that's gonna be impacted uh through this budget in the coming the year ahead.
Oh, here, I just put it up on the screen for you, counselor. Um, you know, that that's the cornerstone project for the, you know, that is the basis for WIFIA. Is essentially building out a new, updating the existing and building a new water treatment plant. So, you know, what I can tell you is, again, and we have said this. We're gonna continue to struggle with compliance over the next couple of years until we're online. So, you know, I I I, we're not gonna have an answer for you in the next two or three years. We'll be under construction. And by the end of five or six years, we're gonna have all new facilities and we'll be able to address uh what our challenges are now and into the future. So, you know, I I think, you know, the 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 future looks really good. Uh, we're identified. We have the funding. We know exactly what we have to do. Uh, we're currently in the process of selecting design engineers. So, I mean, we're 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 full speed ahead. That's what I can tell you. Uh, what I can tell you is that if we didn't get this, the the WIFIA package the way it is today, that we would be proceeding with this. But your rate and and we would be proceeding with only the addressing the current regulatory issue, unfunded regulatory issue. A- a- and your rates would be higher. We'd be more leveraged and in more in debt and at more risk. Because we wouldn't be addressing the thirty other projects that the WIFIA program is knocking off for. So I, you know. I can't stress enough um the work that uh our staff and our commissioners have supported over the past year. Uh, to put us in this position to say, you know, we're gonna be one of a handful of utilities across the country that are gonna take a massive bite. Out of their risk portfolio by getting a lot of work done and um, you know, to I I I couldn't be more excited. I've been doing this. I think twenty-nine years now, never have seen um the opportunity like this and I I'm really excited. Uh, and our staff are really excited. They all realize this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to um. Make improvements, get worked on, build things that need to get built and serve the communities we serve. So we're excited.
That's great. But what does the year ahead for HAA five look like? Cause I know you've done a number of pilot programs. Um, and I know the rates. Have been coming down, but the averages are still running. So have we still seen continued improvement? I'll I'll end there, Mr. President.
Yeah, no, we're we're, uh, thanks, counsel. Yeah, we're good. You know, I I mean, I can't tell you if we're gonna get like unprecedented rain events that are gonna uh, you know, put our source water. Uh, and and wash a lot of organic and and challenge us. Um, but the last round of sampling, we were clean on every sample. I think we gotta mute one person in here. I'm not sure. But uh, the last round of sampling. Uh, all of our samples were clean, but we had to provide a notice because it's our uh uh annual running average. So we had uh three quarters ago. We had a high and that averaged out to put us just over. So. Things look good right now and that's really depending on some factors that are totally out of our control. Um, but we're getting good treatment um right now and we're entering into like our our peak season right now, like as we turn the corner into June. People start using water. Um, so we're in good shape. The reservoir is in good shape. Our raw water quality is really good right now. The numbers for uh organics are are stabilized and coming down. So. I can't make you a promise that you're not gonna get a notice, but um the trend is good.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Council Letterman. Are there any other questions from the council at this time? Any other questions from the council at this time? Josh, I had one question and I think you kind of touched on it. It was. Similar to Council Letterman's last question in regards to the kind of waiting rates. So I I know that um FY twenty-first, let me ask. What calendar dates does your fiscal year follow?
We're we're on the fiscal year, so July one is the start of our of our year. So we're the same as the city.
Okay, um, just in regards to, so I know uh this rate for FY twenty-two would be like, I I believe, uh, five point nine if I'm not mistaken. Um, and then I seen it it go up from there. Can I just ask for the five point nine um coming out of the pandemic where usage I know was, of course. Probably a little bit higher due to folks being at home. How did it stabilize to get to that to that low number initially?
Well, I mean, the the five point nine percent is a result of the financing terms, right? So the the usage rebounded back to what it was, right? And so we sold as much water, actually, we sold a little more water than we anticipated because last year was hot and dry, right? And so uh we rebounded from a consumption standpoint and a billing standpoint. We still need to collect our money because we we still have a lot of outstanding um receivables. However, you know, we're we're gonna collect that. Um, it is what we anticipate. So the five-nine is more a function of. I- if we had different financing terms that weren't as beneficial, that five-nine could very easily be a nine-five. And I think that's why. I'm trying to say the the WIPPI alone and how it allows you to um sculpt your debt and and really shape it the way you want it. So that, you know, basically, we can go, you know, we don't have to pay any principal for five years until we retire some other debt. It's very much. Uh, the the thing I can equate it to um the most for folks is a mortgage, right? So it's like having a very flexible mortgage to say, hey, you know, I got car payments for the next three years. And I'm not gonna be able to pay the full amount of my mortgage, but then after that, the next ten years, I wanna pay a little more. And so that's basically the WIFIA program lets you really shape what your mortgage payment is for the next twenty or thirty years. And that's what allows us to get it down to a five-nine.
That's great to know. And the last question I have is just based merely on observation of driving around the region and seeing. I I'm I'm kind of just amazed that how many kind of water pipes are being put in into like residential neighborhoods at this time. Um, and and neighboring municipalities. Do we have any large-scale projects like that in the in the pipeline? Um, I don't know if it's a trend. I don't know what's going on, honestly.
I, nobody in this region puts more pipe in the ground than we do. I guarantee you, like, we spend more and invest more in our infrastructure than anybody. I I hands down. So uh, you know, a- a- and we also have a lot more infrastructure. So. Like, you know, our treatment plants are out of sight and out of mind. Um, and so you may not know what's going on over here, but uh, again. I mean, we we usually put between two and five million dollars a year worth of pipe in Springfield. Um, and and so, uh, you know, I have to say that I I don't think anybody puts more pipe in the ground than we do. Um, other communities may say, you know, he's lying, but I I I just don't see it. Uh, we're we're. We have different resources. The fact that we're an independent and we control our finances allows us to go out and get loans like the WIFIA program. And allows us to be really aggressive in our capital investment. So uh, I think we're well situated and and making, we always wanna do more. Mr. President, like, you know, if somebody dumps money on us, like, i- i- it, you know, we're not buying new trucks. We're we're plowing it back into the ground so we can grow a better utility. So. That's.
That's true. I I I'll give a Counselor Allen the last word here, but before I do, I just wanna say thank you to uh you and your team. For the work you've done to secure uh this federal uh loan that I think is certainly gonna be offsetting costs for years to come. Um, and I also just wanna appreciate uh Counselor Allen for raising this to the forefront and uh, you know, coordinating this meeting, which I think a a lot of folks should know about. So as you prepare for your budget presentation, um, I'm sure our residents will be pleased to hear of the efforts made. So uh. Uh, that, I'll I'll pass it to Counselor Allen.
Okay, uh, thanks. Thanks, Mr. President. Um, and uh, just a couple of closing comments. Um, great job, great presentation. Tony, I'm sorry, we had to cut you a little bit there, but obviously the financial team has done a great job. Because the rates are where they are and I I know, you know, it doesn't, beyond that, I'm sure it's beyond that, but. At least the the rates are very, the whole picture is is uh really good. So um. Thank you for uh Josh, for your team coming and for the great work. And I think the presentation allowed us to see all. Facets of your operation, at least at a higher level, and uh it looks good. So um. Can I just go over the, for anybody who's interested in attending, your your public hearing is, I believe, Wednesday, June second at six o'clock. Is that right?
Correct.
And um, will you send us notice of that or how to how to participate if uh? That would be good. I I I attended last year. I don't know if I'm gonna attend this year. I'm not sure of my schedule, but. But um, and then you have your, the board votes at the end of June sometime?
I think uh, I don't have it in front of me, Counselor. I think it's the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth of June on a a usually uh nine a nine AM board meeting.
Okay, great. Well, thanks again. I thought this uh uh hopefully accomplished what I wanted to accomplish and hopefully was good for everybody. So um. To Josh, I like working with you on this, getting this ready and uh. Um, having it on the books for three weeks so we could get ready for it, et cetera. So it was great.
Yeah, I I just wanna uh make sure that uh my staff and and our commissioners, um, you know, none of this work happens without having great staff. Uh, at hand and support of commissioners who understand uh what our mission is and and the complexities of delivering on that mission. So uh, I need to thank all of them uh for certain. I'm just a mouth.
Thank you. Could you stop sharing your screen and we can see each other and wave at each other or something?
If I can figure that out, yeah.
There you go. Um, anyway, uh, thanks, everybody. Great job. Um, and uh, good luck with all the projects. Obviously, there's a lot on the books and. We'll be in touch as we go along.
Great. Thanks all.
Thank you.